Thank you. Alderman Kluel, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Kluel. Brian, will you please run roll call? Thank you. I'm filling in this evening as Mayor Klipsh is out of town representing us at the River Quad City, no, not Quad City, Mississippi River. Thank you. He's representing Davenport and the Quad City area, so I am filling in for him, so bear with me. Thank you. Next, I'm going to read the meeting protocol and decorum. So, good evening, as we begin this meeting of the City Council's Committee of the Whole, I would like to welcome all of those in attendance and others viewing the meeting online. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our online broadcasts. We are happy you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a great place to live, learn, work, worship, raise a family, recreate and retire. If you have a cellphone with you, please place it on silent mode or turn it off, as they can interfere with our audio system in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on tonight's agenda, you are encouraged to do so when we reach that point in the agenda. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under the Public with Business portion of the meeting, which occurs near the end of tonight's meeting. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the mayor or chair, and then give your name, address, or ward. I ask all speakers to address the city council as a body and not direct the remarks to any single member. You are requested to limit your remarks to five minutes. I ask that everyone please observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. For those in attendance and for those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. Thank you. Do we have any updates via the city administrator? Okay, thank you. This evening, we do have five public hearings, so I'm going to turn it over to Alderman Rossen to discuss community development.
And just give us a brief description of what that is. Before I ask for a public with comment, thank you.
Bruce Berger, your Community Planning and Economic Development Director. The consolidated plan is something that every year, the annual performance report is something that every year that we report on, and it dovetails our use of CDBG funds, home funds, and those things. So, it's really just an annual that we're required to have the public hearing, and notably, it's not anywhere else on your agenda because there's really no action item, it's just a requirement to have folks be able to comment on it.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing, no one. I close the public hearing and make a motion to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed. The second public hearing for this evening is on the proposed conveyance of property located on the north side of East Second Street in the 200 block otherwise referenced as the green space adjacent to the River Center South. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Yes, sir. Come on up. State your name and address for the record at the podium. Hello.
Hi. I'm Charlie Heston. I reside at 2721 Jefferson in Davenport. I am a former city employee, worked here from 1974 to 2011. I was project manager for the original River Center and the expansion. Original River Center opened in 1984 and the expansion in 1994. I don't object to the plans of the developer or the development itself, but I do object to the location. I want to go over a little bit of the background of the River Center Place, which was one of the larger projects in the downtown, not the largest. The largest financially was the Vision Iowa Program of the River Sance. And some of the forces that were at work at that time included the need of the River Center for dedicated parking, the transition of Iowa Illinois Gas and Electric Company to Mid-American Energy, the opening of the Mark of the Quad Cities, relocation of the Quad City Times to the former French and Hex site, the odyssey of riverboat gambling, which has its own history. The expansion was about $100 million. Part of my comments come from the Civic Center study, which was conducted in 1989 by Steve Peters, and their assistant architects were HNTB out of Kansas City. He said, and I think it's in the report, but nobody can, that I've asked, can find a copy of it, which is, I think I threw mine out about six years ago, so. The facilities that are built are generally expand or are updated about every 10 years. Hall space should be built to match the competition, which at the time and today still is the Quad City Conservation Alliance, which has about 60,000 square feet of exhibit space. The existing hall on the south side of Third Street has about 32,000 square feet, and the original River Center Hall, which has been turned into more or less a banquet and conference center, is about 16,000 square feet. There's also a symbiotic relationship between conference centers and their hotels. In our case, we have the Blackhawk Hotel and the Radisson. My points related to this proposal include the following. Once this parcel is sold, the logical planned expansion of the River Center is gone. The Quad City Area Competition, which includes about three facilities, can all expand on adjacent parking lots that they currently own. The Iowa competition is changing very quickly. Examples include the attachment of Cedar Rapids, which has 132,000 square feet of exhibit space. Des Moines Hy-Vee Center, this morning, Iowa State Center had an article in the sports section, and I know Council Bluffs and Sioux City are doing something, but I'm not fully aware of it. I don't believe the city, the community, are going to walk away from the investments that have been made in River Center Place. There are needs in the Quad Cities for updated space and other things that a new feasibility study could provide, but, you know, I think that's up to you to decide whether you want to pursue that or not. I'm not trying to reorder the River Center's priorities. They are both dealing with facilities that are about 15 and 30 years old. There was an article about updating HVAC system for $1.8 million last year. The main exhibit hall can be expanded on property that you presently own, and these points come from my involvement with the architect, Shai Fattery, during design. The fire pumps were built for the expansion. The south wall of the existing facility can be moved, it's made of precast concrete. The structural system of the hall goes east to west and can be replicated. The HVAC system in the expansion are rooftop units, and they can be, they're modular units, and they can be expanded with modifications to the control system. The lobby, south plaza, partition wall, concession, east loading docks don't require modification. Davenport has many expanding motels and hotels, and that should be improving the fund balance of the hotel motel tax. Debt service and coverage of operating losses have also been used for this purpose, but I know there's other permitted uses in the law, and I don't want to get into that. Concerning this development, I question first-floor retail, even though it's in a good location related to development in that sector. I use existing parking ramp and efforts that have been made in the District of Rock Island. There are other development sites in the downtown. I think they're owned by a Mid-American, I'm not sure today. One is at the northeast corner, Second and Perry, the other's at the southeast corner, Fourth and Iowa, and I'm not familiar with the development of the downtown way, but as I understand it, Russell Construction has land that's available also. The site plan, as I've seen it, has no rear access for deliveries or services like garbage pickup. 60 apartment units is going to require some additional parking in the downtown, and I believe the River Center parking ramp is probably the most used facility in the downtown. That needs to be verified. And residential generally has a need for quietness, and some of the events in the River Center are a little raucous. I appreciate your time. I know this is your decision to make, and you can make it next week if that's your decision. I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you, sir. This isn't a question and answer session.
And I have a hearing.
Thank you. You can go ahead and sit down.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you." Anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this item? State your name and address for the record.
Sure. Kyle Carter, Downtown Davenport Partnership, Fifth Ward. So, I would just like to point out that we are very supportive of this project. We really are excited about the unique nature of the, these retail, or these, both the retail and the, excuse me, both the retail and the apartment complex element of this. You know, this site has been looked at for a long time, and while the study from 1989 may have said one thing, we've had a lot of studies done since. This has been designated as a development site in our master plan since 2013. In addition to that, we have spoken to the River Center staff numerous times about this, they're well aware of it, have expressed that they have no desire to expand that, with the main reason being that even if we were to expand, it wouldn't elevate the facility to another level in the sense that we're not going to get all of a sudden larger conventions because of this one expansion if it were to happen. I think that you'd see their staff here today talking about this, if it was any concern to them, that they would be losing the ability to add that space down the road. Ultimately, we think this is a great project that shows a lot of energy in an area of downtown that I think could really use it right now. And again, the retail element of this alone is exciting in that we have the ability to almost double the amount of retail and actually have a real corridor down there along Second Street, which is something we've been striving for, for a long time. So, I certainly can appreciate the long view of where we've come on the River Center site, but I don't think that this prevents the convention hall from doing what it does and doing it well. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions on that if necessary, but just wanted to make sure that the group knew that the partnership has been very supportive of this project.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing, no one. I move to close this public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and it's back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Next, we have Public Works, so Alderman Dunn will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three public hearings this evening for Public Works. I open the first public hearing on amending ordinance, Chapter 13.34, entitled Stormwater Management, by including a waiver process for detention in redevelopment areas where otherwise infeasible, and for the commercial downtown and congruity adjacent I-1, I-2, and IMU districts, clarifying grading expectations, inclusion of Chapter 15.44, flood damage prevention, and clarification on the unified sizing criteria staged release rates. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated costs covering the Main Street Landing Phase III Electrical Construction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated costs covering the Kaiser Slot and Square Upgrade Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and that concludes public hearings for Public Works.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. We have no presentations this evening, so our next item is petitions and communications from council members, and I'm going to start that real quick. I do have a ward meeting coming up on Monday at 6:30 at the East Road Avenue Library, and library staff will be presenting in regards to the services and resources that's provided through the Davenport Public Library. You don't have to live in the eighth ward, so it's certainly open to anybody. Hope to see you there again Monday at 6:30. I'm also then going to turn it over to Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few things tonight. First of all, Midcoast Fine Arts River Sance Festival of Fine Arts will be celebrating its 32nd year in 2019. It's the premier fine arts festival of the Quad Cities, and it's Saturday, September 21st, 10 to 5 p.m., and Sunday, September 22nd, 10 to 4 b.m. The festival will be in the beautiful Upper Lindsey Park near the Village of East Davenport. There will be a free children's art exhibit, wine tasting, gourmet food, and live regional music. There's also going to be a couple of artists showing how they do the magic that they do throughout the event, so an extra special treat there. Kids are free, adults can buy a one-day ticket for $4 or a two-day pass for $6. And then the Central High School Environmental Club is selling very cool t-shirts designed by talented student artist Martha Barnes. All funds raised will go to beautification of the Central High School grounds. If you'd like to support the student club, you can order your t-shirt at tdcclub19 itemorder.com. And it's $10, great price and a beautiful shirt. And then finally, and this is coming up next week, but it's never too early to get tickets, the Flight Squad battles the Scott and Rock Island County School Districts during Hoops for Hope in the Davenport Central High Gym, Saturday, September 28th, beginning at 6 p.m. Tickets are available now online, and the event benefits Hope at the Brick House in Davenport and also Heart of Hope in Rock Island. Hope at the Brick House provides summer and afternoon, after-school activities for youth and family events and support services in the neighborhoods surrounding Hilltop Campus Village. So, the tickets are $10 a person, $25 for a family. They're available online at hopeatthebrickhouse.org or at the gate the day of the event. And again, the fun starts December 28th at 6 p.m. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Gribb.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to make the public aware of a really great event that's happening this weekend, the Mission of Mercy Dental Clinic. This is a no-cost, free-of-charge dental clinic where dentists from around the state of Iowa come together with the Mission of Mercy, and they put on dental clinics across the state. You need to, it's recommended you bring your health history, but there is no cost, no insurance, and no limit to where you live. So, if you live in the Quad Cities or anywhere in Iowa, you can show up and you will be provided free dental care. Cleanings, root canals, extractions, and even partial dentures will be provided. So, if dental care is not something that you have access to, you can show up Friday and Saturday, September 20th and 21st, to the River Center at 136 East Third Street, and the dentist at Mission of Mercy Dental Clinic will help you with your issues. This is a fantastic thing. It comes to Davenport every few years. I've known some people that this is the way that they get their dental care, and if you don't have access to dental care, you realize how important it is. And I want to thank my colleagues on the council, everyone on the city council approved funds, beautification dollars to help support, to bring this group here, and we hope that is a great success, and many people are served this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gribb. I don't see anybody else with any announcements, so we're going to move on for our action items for discussion. The first area to be discussed is community development. This discussion is led by Alderman Rossen, and Alderman Ambrose will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, for community development, we have two items under this consideration. The first item is the second consideration, ordinance for Case PUD 19-01, request by Juan Goitia for a major modification to an existing planned unit development for the property located at 1002 Bridge Avenue. And what I'll say ahead of time is that I mentioned this yesterday at briefing, is I will be making a motion to approve this, to pass this on second consideration, just so the petitioner can have the extra two weeks to get started. He'd like to get the building built before winter sets in, and here in Iowa, that can be an unknown. So, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing, no one. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to pass this on second consideration. Do I hear a second? There's a motion's been made and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, and that passes, that'll be passed on this second's consideration. Second item on the agenda, resolution and proposed conveyance of property located on the north side of East Second Street in the 200 block otherwise referenced as the green space adjacent to the River Center South. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? I see Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Yes, if staff could just, we had some, we had someone talking about plans that were made when the River Center was built, and just a little bit of perspective on where that market is now might be helpful for everybody. Thank you.
Sure. Alderman, oh, I got it, Bruce. I spoke with a number of staff through a variety of departments today, as well as our partner who operates the River Center. The industry has changed a lot, and we are a mid-sized market, so there's really no future vision for expanding the River Center, and that's been consistent for about the last five to 10 years, I think, as long as many of you have been on council. However, as consistent with what you see in the CIP, it's not about the quantity of space going forward, it's about the quality of space. So, great Wi-Fi, great connectivity for AV materials, great wayfinding, making sure the space is really user-friendly. That's where we're seeing the investment need going forward for this asset in the city.
Was that it, Alderman McGinnis? Okay. All right. Alderman Gribb.
First, if I could just follow up on that. So, as far as what we've set aside for capital improvement of the River Center, and then what else, aside from that, is needed to make the River Center competitive?
I'd have to look at the six-year CIP in general, but we did do the HVAC. I know we've talked about tech upgrades, things like that, I think internally, and I don't know where it sits in the CIP, some aesthetic and amenity upgrades internal, but I think you'll see us continue to make those recommendations into the six-year CIP to ensure that our asset is viable in the long run.
Okay. From a business perspective, is the River Center looking, is there a plan? Do they, do they have a business plan of what the River Center should look like in five or 10 years, or the plan is we're going to continue with what we have?
I know Brandon and Rick talk pretty frequently about that. I don't know if our partners prepared an actual plan, and if they have, I can follow up and get that to you.
Okay. I mean, I think that would be helpful, and if they don't, you know, if expansion isn't part of the plan, but making sure that we have our current configuration is competitive and what we need to get it there, having the numbers for that would be helpful.
So, I did ask Rick specifically about use, and would expansion make a difference in both what we have for events at the venue and those we might attract? He said in the last five years, there's only one event that would be interested in more space, but most of the users do look for kind of those upgrades, the technology, those things. So, one user in five years, I think, guides us on where our investments should go.
Okay. And so, I guess my comment on that would be, I think a lot of the stuff that we approved in the CIP is strictly maintenance, and it is not that tech stuff, it is not upgrading to what they need to be competitive, and if there is a need for them to make those upgrades to continue to support that business, then there should be a plan and a dollar value that the council can evaluate going forward. Thank you. So, in general, and I wish Mr. Hess went on the left, I don't think he realized that we were going to have further conversation on this, but I do appreciate his perspective and his care for the River Center and the city. In general, I am in favor of this project. I really like it. I like it for its urban design. I like it because it has retail on the first floor. There is a gap on that block that that, not only the park creates that's there, the green space that's there right now, but also the parking ramp next to it. When you have retail on the ground in an urban environment, the green spaces like that, where no people gather typically, and then a parking garage creates places where people don't want to walk. And we've got a few retailers there that are on either side of that gap who are saying people, they, they don't want to bridge the gap as pedestrians. This project will help with that. And then I also think that the residential is going to help all of the retail that we already have on the east side. This would be the first building being built on the east side of Davenport or in downtown since the flood, and I know that there is going to be redevelopment. Many of the businesses that saw damage from the flood are reopening, have already reopened, and the ones that haven't, I know that there are other retailers who are ready to move in. And then another thing that I like about this is it is the first Opportunity Zone project that we're seeing in Davenport, and I know that we have a few others that are trying to take off, and I hope it'll be the first of several Opportunity Zone projects that we see. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Manson.
Thank you, Madam. I like the Opportunity Zone and the project. Just curious, Ms. Spiegel, if you could talk about, because this is quite the nice opportunity place, if there's any, been any discussions with any local folks, because I just, it's just curious to me that any of our local contractors or developers or builders or whoever wouldn't want to do something here, and this, again, nothing with the thing that's going on, but I just think it's curious, because we had a local folk group that wanted to do something, then they didn't, and then now we have someone from out of town, which I don't have problem with them by themselves, or the project, but that we didn't maybe give the opportunity to someone else. So, if you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure, and I would share that with Alderman McGinnis if she's interested. So, we, Opportunity Zone is something we talk at the Downtown Partnership Board meeting every month and have for, well, since we got our certification from the state and the feds. It's very complicated, so the DDP Board is engaged. Kyle Day, Atlanta Waterman, who built a whole perform on this, and so it's fairly complicated. I think we'll have some opportunities for local developers to partake. We have more sites, there are privately held sites, there are, I think what's most exciting for some of us is those sites one, one layer up from the downtown that become more attractive with this, that are part of the Opportunity Zone. So, I think this, to Alderman Gribb's point, this is the first, and because we have a developer who's, who's done this type of product and this type of delivery and understands all of the tax nuance to Opportunity Zone, I think from our perspective, this is a great first project for us all to work on so that we can leverage that knowledge going forward.
So, you've had no, there's been no interest discussion or from anybody around here about that spot since the other one didn't?
Not since our previous contract.
Since the other one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from council on this item? Seeing and hearing, no one. This item, we'll move on. I'd ask Alderman Ambrose to set an agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to keep both these items on a discussion agenda. Do I have a motion?
Sure. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes community development.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. The second area to be discussed tonight is public safety, so Alderman Gribb will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda. that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 5 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "Four-Way Stop Intersections by Deleting Eastern Avenue at Elm Street." Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "Resident Parking Only by Adding Rushholme Street along the north side from Ripley Street West to the alley." Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number three is a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 14 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "Intersection Traffic Signals by Adding Hickory Grove Road at the Northern Most Cobham Driveway." Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just be interested if people would want to move this on second. I'd recommend that.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, we'll move that on second, keep it on discussion. I will make a comment that Cobham is doing some upgrades to their facilities there. They're adding a parking lot, upgrading some docks, and then also upgrading their stormwater under their parking lot, and this is tied to that. They're a great employer here in Davenport, in northwest Davenport especially, so any help that we can give to them. Again, winter is coming, so they want to get their projects done before then. Thank you, Alderman Mattson, for that. Seeing no one else, that item will stay on discussion. Item number four is a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 10 of Chapter 10.96, entitled "Two-Hour Parking by Deleting Harrison Street along the east side from Fourth Street to Fifth Street." Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number five is a first consideration ordinance amending Chapter 5.24 of the Davenport Municipal Code, entitled "Massage Business Information Requirement." Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, I will make a comment that this has been a success, that the ordinance that was drafted by our staff, supported by the entire council, has been effective in shutting these illicit massage parlors down, although a few of them have found some loopholes. That is what this amendment is set to do, is kind of close the loopholes and ensure that these illegal massage parlors aren't operating in the city of Davenport. So, congratulations to my colleagues on effectively fighting that. Item number six is a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. I'll read through the entire list and then ask for comments after. Davenport Schools, West Homecoming Parade, Thursday, September 26, 2019, 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. The parade route is west on West Seventeenth Street from North Clark to North Elsie, north on North Elsie to West Lombard, west on West Lombard to North Nevada, south on North Nevada to finish in the West High School parking lot. Scott Tonocleff, Hilltop Retro Fest and Zeke's Pirate Run, Saturday, September 28, 2019. Closures, 8 a.m. to 12 p.m., Main Street between Locust Street and Fifth Street, 8 a.m. to 10 p.m., Fifteenth Street between Harrison Street and Main Street. Todd Thomas, Progressive Baptist Church Friends and Family Day, 1302 East Twelfth Street, Saturday, September 28, 2019, 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. Closure, East Twelfth Street between College Avenue and Esplanade Avenue. Davenport Schools, Central Homecoming Parade, Thursday, October 3, 2019, 5 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Closures, staging, 5 p.m. to 6 p.m., Woodland Avenue and Eighteenth Street in front of McKinley Elementary. Parade route, 6 p.m. to 7 p.m., east on Eighteenth Street to Fernwood Avenue, south on Fernwood Avenue to Forest Road, north on Forest Road to Middle Road, west on Middle Road to Woodland Avenue, north on Woodland Avenue to Eighteenth Street, east on Eighteenth Street to finish at McKinley Elementary. Amy Kay, Neighborhood Block Party, 2322 Harrison Street, Saturday, October 5, 2019, 3 p.m. to 7 p.m. Closure is Ripley Street between West Dover Court and West Rushholme Street. Davenport Association of Professional Firefighters, Lights and Sirens Parade and Annual Fire Muster, Village of East Davenport, Sunday, October 6, 2019, 12 p.m. to 4 p.m. Closures, East Eleventh Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East Eleventh Street to East Twelfth Street. Village of East Davenport, Christmas in the Village, Friday, December 6, 2019, and Saturday, December 7, 2019, 5 p.m. to 10 p.m. Closures, East Eleventh Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from Eleventh Street north to the alley. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these closures? Anyone from the council? These items will all move on. Item number seven is a motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. Once again, I'll read through all of the noise variance requests, ask for public input afterwards. Scott Tonocleff, Hilltop Retro Fest and Zeke's Pirate Run, Saturday, September 28, 2019, 8 a.m. to 10 p.m., outdoor music performances over 50 dB. Davenport Schools, West Homecoming Parade, Thursday, September 26, 2019, 4 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. I read the parade route earlier, outdoor music performances over 50 dB. Todd Thomas, Progressive Baptist Church Friends and Family Day, 1302 East Twelfth Street, Saturday, September 28, 2019, 12 p.m. to 3 p.m., outdoor music over 50 dB. Davenport Schools, Central Homecoming Parade, Thursday, October 3, 2019, 5 p.m. to 7:30 Again, I read the parade route earlier, outdoor music performances over 50 dB. Matt Madril, Fall Crawl, 2224 Harrison Street, Saturday, October 5, 2019, 12 p.m. to 5 p.m. Outdoor Music over 50 dB. Claire Nicholas, Fall Crawl, 2208 North Ripley Street, Saturday, October 5, 2019, 12 p.m. to 5 p.m. Outdoor Music over 50 dB. Delbert Todd, Fall Crawl, 1920 North Main Street, Saturday, October 5, 2019, 12 p.m. to 5 p.m. Outdoor Music over 50 dB. Amy Kay, Neighborhood Block Party, Ripley Street between West Dover Court and West Rushholme Street, Saturday, October 5, 2019, 4:30 p.m. to 7 p.m. Outdoor Music over 50 dB. Davenport Association of Professional Firefighters, Lights and Sirens Parade and Annual Fire Muster, East Village of, Village of East Davenport, Sunday, October 6, 2019, 12 p.m. to 4 p.m. Sirens, Outdoor Music over 50 dB. Village of East Davenport, Christmas in the Village, Friday, December 6, 2019, and Saturday, December 7, 2019, 6 p.m. to 10 p.m. Outdoor Music, Fireworks over 50 dB. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of these items? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Corey, I know you're working on this crawl issue, and we've got a little history that we've been dealing with in the past. And all I request is that we have enough police staff for these events, and that when laws are being broken, they're held accountable, okay?
I have a similar statement to what Alderman Ambrose said. This is the first time we've seen the fall crawls related to, it looks like St. Ambrose, the homecoming, they came in, they did the proper permitting. I'm looking at the times, 12 p.m. to 5 p.m. So, give them the opportunity, and if they're good neighbors, you know, it can continue in the future, and if they're not, then something that the council will have to address next Seeing nothing else, those items will move on. Number eight. All right. Lots of public safety tonight. Item number eight is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. A is new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera, as noted. Ward 3, Lumpy's Inc., 1509 North Harrison Street, outdoor area, September 28, 2019, Retro Fest, license type B, beer. Cathedral Ale, 422 East Tenth Street, outdoor area, license type B, beer. Wise Guys Pizza, Next Door Pub, 2720 West Locust Street, Unit B-15, outdoor area, license type C, liquor. Rookie Sports Bar, 2818 Brady Street, extended outdoor area, September 21, customer appreciation event, license type C, liquor. Note that this will be voted on later in this agenda. Cabos Cantina and Grill, 25717 Elmore Avenue, Suite E, license type C, liquor. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any of those liquor license applications? Any comments from the council? And then, Section B is annual license renewals. We do not read through those. Those are listed for your information in our packet, though. And looking to the end, there's nothing else. I'll ask Alderwoman Dickman to set the agenda.
I move that item number three be placed on discussion, and that all other items be placed on consent, except for the item that will be voted on later in the agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes public safety this evening, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Now you can relax. The third area to be discussed is Public Works. Excuse me, Alderman Dunn will lead that discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 14 items on the Public Works agenda this evening. Item number one is the first consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 13.34, entitled "Stormwater Management by Including a Waiver Process for Detention in Redevelopment Areas Where Otherwise Infeasible," including verbiage for a flat-rate stormwater fee for the CD and Congruity Adjacent I-1, I-2, IMU districts, clarifying grading expectations inclusion of Chapter 15.44, flood damage prevention, and clarification on the unified sizing criteria staged release rates. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the submission of an Iowa Clean Air Abatement Program application for grant assistance to replace the Elm Street Bridge over the Canadian Pacific Railway. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a preliminary resolution for the FY20 Alley Resurfacing Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding the 1930s Interceptor Flow Diversion Project to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $9,479,387.51. And before I ask for comment, do we have someone from staff that can give us an overview of this project?
Brian Shad, Public Works. There have been a few jokes coming around, but yes, I am extremely excited about this project. The old 1930s line used to run from the east side of town to our former wastewater treatment plant that was located roughly at Division and River Drive. The upgraded plant was put in the '70s, and the 1970s line was put in at the same time to convey that, plus the other wastewater flows from the east. We found that the 1930s line is no longer viable. Structurally, the joints leak, there are ties to the Mississippi River box allowing river water in, as well as storm water. So, eliminating that was named as part of our administrative order. So, we will go through disconnect all the cross-connections between the '30s and the '70s, put in some new pipe to make sure we convey all the additional storm or sanitary through the city to that 1970s, and then abandon the other one in place.
Thanks, Brian.
Just to give you where we're at, the red is the eliminated 1930s, the blue is the existing 1970s.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the inspection and construction engineering contract for the 1930s Interceptor Flow Diversion Project to Vistra and Kim, in the amount not to exceed $268,546. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution accepting the Miracle Field of the Quad Cities Phase Two project completed by Precision Builders Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa. This project was completed with a final contract amount of $113,642.95. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution of acceptance for the Elmore Avenue Patching Project, completed by CDMI Concrete Contractors Incorporated of Port Byron, Illinois, with a final cost of $243,276.44. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution of acceptance for the Fourth and Leclerc Street Sewer Separation Project, completed by Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, with a final cost of $513,998.64. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution to purchase 10 Chevy Tahoe police SUVs from Carl Chevrolet Incorporated of Ankeny, Iowa, in the amount of $356,413.40. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for covering of the Main Street Landing Phase Three Electrical Construction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the covering of the Kaiser Slot and Square Upgrade Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I was just going to say that this was, I think, we approved this last winter. Is that when it was? Time kind of flies, but approved it last winter. The hope was to have it done by this fall. Obviously, bids were unfavorable, so I've got this correct, that we're trying to, we're going out for a rebid and trying to break this up so that we come within the budget of what we've set. And I think the, well, at least from my perspective, the project is adequately funded. If we can't update that space for the price that we've put, we shouldn't go over it. So, hopefully, we get favorable bids and can execute this in the spring and have another downtown park ready to go. This was very well-supported by the public and with alternative funding when we put this together last winter. So, hopefully, favorable bids and make this thing go soon. Thank you.
Alderman Mattson. Thank you. I just want to add a little bit to what Alderman Grip said, because when we first talked about it, it was just going to be city funding, and then we worked, the staff and the council worked with private partners to make a good private-public partnership to do this, to get this done. So, I hope, as Alderman Grip said, that the bids come in, because I agree. We worked hard to get a bunch of players to help with this, so I hope people understand that. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12, it's that time of year again, motion awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of calcium chloride to Silico LTD of Hillsdale, Illinois. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a motion awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of anti-icing chemicals to Ocean Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 14 is a motion awarding the contract for the FY20 Root Control Program to Duke Root Control of Syracuse, New York, in the amount not to exceed $50,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Condon, would you set the agenda, please?
Yes, but if I may, first, I want to apologize to Alderman Grip. As the senior Alderman-at-large, I think you have big shoulders, and I looked to you for your leadership, and somehow you got strapped with public safety, and all I have to do is say that I want to put all items on consent. I have to do is say that I want to put all items on consent. But you broke today. Where were those parade routes? We finally broke you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That is set and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, I appreciate it. Um, our last area to be discussed is finance. Uh, this is much smaller, so Alderman Mattson will lead this discussion and Alderman Kooel will set the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, fill her in. Three items on finance, so first one's a resolution approving a memorandum of an understanding between the City of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District. Uh, before I ask public, I just want to say, um, this is, uh, started a bit ago, uh, with the cooperation of the council and the school district to have an understanding that we need to continue to work together and improve. And, uh, I just want to give a little shout out to, uh, Alderman Tompkins, Alderwoman Tompkins and Julie DeSaville, uh, myself and Mr. Potts sit on it, but those two, um, really did the work, uh, to develop this and then with the help of the staff and Mr. Wright, uh, to get this done. It, it's a great understanding and basically says that, uh, we're just formalizing our agreement to work together, talk together and, and, and help each other understand what's going on. So it's been a little bit of, uh, of discussion to get it going, but because Alderwoman Tompkins and, um, current school board member Julie DeSaville really did the work, I just want to say thanks and, uh, anybody from the public want to comment?
Council? Alderman Kooel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to express my appreciation too for the work that was done by council, school board members, staff from both, uh, organizations. You know, Mayor Guba used to say that as goes the schools, so goes the cities, and it's absolutely true. And so I think these months of effort to put together this memorandum are going to, uh, support all of us in a way and make a better tomorrow for Davenport as a whole. So I, I again, express my appreciation for the hard work that you did.
Thank you. Alderman Grip?
Thank you. Um, Alderman Mattson's actually for me, but I don't have a button to push so that it lights up for you. So thank you.
Please.
So, um, I just wanted to say thank you for the comments. I do appreciate that. This has been a great opportunity. We've had some really good conversations, um, and I certainly look forward to see where this relationship goes and it's good to have something in, in document, in a document, um, so that we do, um, have something in writing and we can move forward. So, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, item two, resolution to set the date for a public hearing on a proposed, proposal to enter into a state revolving fund sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars, five hundred thousand. Uh, anyone from the public like to comment? Council? Very good. Number three, motion awarding a contract for the Housing Needs Assessment to Western Economic Services of Portland, Oregon, in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand. Anyone from the public like to comment? Council? Very good. And then we have some, uh, purchases of ten thousand to fifty thousand we don't read, they're just for your, uh, information. So I'll ask, uh, Alderman Kooel to recommend an agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that all items be moved forward to the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, now we just have other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, and we do have a motion for suspension of the rules to vote on a following item. Um, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Um, the item is a new license, new, oh, do I need to call roll? I'm sorry. Brian, will you please call roll?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kooel?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
And Grip?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you. Now I can read the motion. This is a new license, uh, in Ward five for Rookie's Sports Bar, Rookie's Incorporated, twenty-eight eighteen Brady Street, extended outdoor area, September twenty-first, a customer appreciation event, license type C, liquor. Does anybody in the public have any comments on this item? Seeing none, will an Alderman move the motion, please? Any discussion from any of our Aldermen? Seeing no discussion, Brian, will you please call the roll?
Kooel?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you. This motion has passed. At this time, it is open to the public, so if anybody has any items that they'd like to address the, uh, council, please step up, state your name and ward or address.
My name is Nicole Bribska Ledger. Um, I'm a commissioner on the Davenport Civil Rights Commission as it stands right now. As you may know, or maybe you don't know, this from the media, who reports what they want to the public, the public to hear, but not always the truth. As you know, the commission has not been able to conduct business for the last four months because of the corruption in the city council and with the mayor. When you first tried to remove the three commissioners illegally in November, we refused to recognize them and signed a resolution. My question is, why did you not take it to court way back then? The only logical thing I can come up with is that you knew you were wrong and you knew you would not win. So instead you tried to remove us all and replace us with the people that would follow your corrupt agenda. You all don't care about the people that you were supposed to represent. All that matters is what makes you look good and not what is in the best interest of the people. Obviously that didn't work because you had no cause to fire us, which is backed by the judge's ruling that said you must have cause. Just because the mayor listed reasons on a letter, that doesn't make it cause. Where's the proof? Where's the investigation? As this whole thing drags on, the more that I learn and the more that I wonder, to what lengths will you all go? What other laws will be broken other than the open meetings law, the slander of everyday hardworking people like myself, or maybe the forgery that was proven in a deposition of one of the council members here before us? I'm just wondering what that council member is going to do about it. Are you still weighing your options? Or are you choosing to do nothing and stand by the corruption running through this government? But the biggest question I have is, what are all the council members and the mayor afraid of? Are you afraid of the truth coming out to the public about what is really going on in the city? Is that why you filed for a protection order against being deposed? Do your depositions and don't hide like cowards.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Brian Winger, um, I don't, I don't have a word. Um, speaking on what Nicole was speaking there, um, who holds the mayor accountable? That's what I want to know. I, you know, we, we learned, the last time I was here, I read a deposition, everybody heard what it said. It was pretty clear what it said. It said that somebody's signature was used without their permission on an official document of the city. Nothing's been done with, about it, like Nicole said, and everybody's just sitting here, just, so the mayor gets to do anything he wants to? Is that what it is? I, I don't understand. There's nobody's going to hold anybody accountable for it or anything? You're not going to go to anybody and say anything about it and say, hey, maybe we should investigate this? You know, not only that, but the, the signature in question that was taken was a veteran. A veteran got his signature stolen. Nobody cares. A veteran. I'm a veteran. Do I have to be married, worried about the mayor stealing my signature and putting it on something?
This is a listening session only, so...
I understand. I'm not waiting for anybody's answer. I'm just looking at y'all. Hope maybe y'all look at yourselves.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who'd wish to comment tonight? Thank you. Please step, step up and state your name and ward or address.
Teresa Zablodilla, and what else did you need?
Your name or address or ward? Thank you.
I'm not sure which ward I'm in, actually, and I don't want to give my address at this time. Thank you. Um, I'm very disappointed with the Police Department because I had made, um, a few complaints about being harassed by passengers and, um, when I went to Internal Affairs, they never got back to me. And then when they did, it was a meeting, it was on a city council meeting when, um, so then I missed addressing any issues with city council as well. And when I went to get a report, they had a sign that the, they had upped the charge to fifteen dollars on April tenth, twenty nineteen. So I feel like they were trying to intimidate me into backing off on getting reports. And the report that I got was not what I stated, you know, about this person. Part of its, parts of it is true, where I said I was being harassed while riding the bus, but they went on to other statements, like, it was three sentences long, when I stated that I described the bus driver and that she, what she was wearing, braided hair, heavyset, and also the fact that she was in a white SUV with a decal on the back. So that's not prudent for me to pay for information when it's not complete and accurate information. So I don't know what they're trying to cover up. And I've had complaints, or I made complaints about people harassing me at the bus as well as having stuff thrown at me. And I think Internal Affairs, you know, needs to call people back and converse with people because it should not have gone on this long. And, um, my second issue I would address is, how does it take forty-five minutes to get a fire out at Breckenridge Apartments when they had hoses up the front? And they don't listen to the people? They can't move ladders to help other people out? And how do you not, how can you not back up a, a fire truck up, uh, up a drive in the back and let, uh, the fire continue endlessly when they were told which apartment it was in? And, you know, how does a person leave and his dog dies and nothing's done about that tenant and nobody was warned? And the fire extinguishers were not used? So I think there is a lot of corruption as well. And, you know, people need to be doing their jobs, not just collecting a paycheck and protecting, and they should be protecting the citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment tonight?
Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmore and I live in the sixth ward. Maybe we can end tonight's meeting on a little bit lighter, but, but yet still very serious matter. I don't think, and, and this relates to the purchases of ten to fifty thousand dollars that, that we don't read and nobody pays attention to. I don't think it takes a trained audiologist to determine the sound system in this chamber is poor, inadequate, worn out, junk. I believe that to say that the sound system at the modern Woodman Amusement Park is worse and deserves to be replaced at the city's expense before the sound system in these chambers is poor judgment in the least, and I believe fiscally irresponsible. So we didn't charge him for the games that weren't played because of a flood which we had no control over. Then you voted not to charge him fifty-three thousand dollars for the remainder of the games, and now it was determined by someone to replace his sound system at a cost of over fourteen thousand dollars. This makes no sense. As a, as a former commercial for a cell phone user used to say, can you hear me now? I don't think so.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public with any comments for this evening?
My name is, uh, Will Reed. I'm with, uh, King's Harvest Ministries. I just want to thank the city and especially the Police Department for all of the support